Everybody to the April 21st, 2015 Town Planning Board Meeting. We're going to move one of the items out of order. We're going to move the public hearing for Osgood Solar LLC up to the front. We only have three regular members, so we can't have any votes on this tonight. So, we're going to not make you sit through this. So, because we only have, Peter cannot vote on this item. He's an associate member. So, if someone would like to make a motion that we continue it without hearing any evidence.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You're done. You're welcome. And, next up, Race Pond Pump Station. Do you want to give us a...
We have Bruce Tibbino, Department of Public Works Director, here to represent this project. This is actually a request for a watershed special permit waiver. The existing pump station is within the 50-foot no-build zone for conservation. This project proposes to move it out of that zone, as well as outside of the FEMA floodplain. The new station is designed to support the seasonal high and low flow variations with improved pumping capacity and wastewater storage, and enhance redundancy and resilience with updated electrical service backup controls and standby power.
This is, I'm Bruce Tibbino, Public Works Director, and I gave the engineers the night off tonight. They have to come to conservation. I figured I'd let them do that. So, I'm going to present this tonight. This is a project that's been in the pipeline for a long time. In fact, I've come to the board on the CIP issues on this for a couple of times now. Part of the project is the pump station, but also the upgrades of the sewers that were just, that have been done on Sutton Street. So, we had to kind of do those. So, it's been in the CIP program for a couple of years. This year, we're going to town meeting for the rest of the money to build the pump station. And, if we're successful there, we hope to build it over the next, you know, 18 to 20 months. So, it, as Jean said, it's taking the existing pump station, which was built in the 1980s, early 1980s, and we're going to rebuild, do, build a new one to the left of it. You see in the plan. Outside, well, that's the, that's the existing. That's where the existing is. It's right across, for those that don't know where it is, it's, it's right across from the pond, the lake, right on the edges of Race Pond, on Route 133, as you get down to the bottom of the hill before you start going back up to, towards Boxford. And, as I said, it was built in the 80s by developers to, to service French Farm, and then everything started being developed in that area and going into it. It goes all the way up. The service area goes up 133 up towards Chickwick and so forth. So, it's a pretty, it's a large area. It's antiquated, as I said, but more importantly, it's under capacity. And, when we have major rainstorms, and because the, a lot of the lines that lead into it are in wetlands or go along wetlands, you know, we do get some, a lot of inflow, especially when things are up. We've done a lot of work on the sewer system that has, is tributary to it, but it's really time to make sure that this pump station gets renovated, capacity increased. When we have major rainstorms, and we haven't had anything in this, this area for a number of years, we've never had an overflow from this pump station. It's because the, the mechanics really know how to take care of this. If there's a major storm, they're down here. They know this is our weak point. They get down there, and we bring in extra pumps, and we pump into, into tanker trucks and get it into the sewer system. So, but that's, again, that's probably, I think that's been done one or two times in the seven years that I've been here, but it's still potential. So, we're, we're moving out of the floodplain, out of the wetlands. It's a below-ground pump station. The only thing you're going to see is about what you see there now, which is the generator set and the electrical and so forth. The, there are best management practices for the drainage. There's, where the, where there is some impervious ground, it's, it's going to, there's a whip along there. It's going to catch the water that runs off of that, put it into a storm scepter, and then into infiltration. So, post-development is, is less than, than pre. And then, when the pump station is built, the old pump station will be taken out of service, obviously demolished. We will use a little bit of that area for the parking area for recreation for the people that, that fish along the, down there. The people that leave, you know, all that, probably. And, and then the rest of it will be loamed in with the conservation seed. So, we'll bring it all back to, to that. So, I'm here to ask for your approval of the waiver and to answer any questions that you should have, or might have on this.
What's the lifespan of the new one? You mentioned...
Probably about 50 years.
50 years, okay.
That's what we usually figure. You usually go 75 at the time, but it's usually a 50. You might renovate it and upgrade some of the things on it, but it's usually about 50 years, is what you figure.
How much additional impervious? How much additional impervious will there be?
Uh, there's, there's less. There'll be less.
There's less now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just the, just the things that you see in there, really. And, the parking is going to, is going to be gravel. Any parking that's in there is gravel, so, yeah. So, the post-develop, like I said, the post-development is much less than even what's, what's there now.
And, there's a paved driveway in.
Yeah.
It's being relocated.
Yeah.
And, some of the stormwater management is to catch that stormwater runoff from the driveway. It does involve infiltration, which is within the Zone A. It's typically not allowed, but DEP has been contacted, and they've reviewed it. Jennifer Hughes has consulted. And, essentially, it's better to do something than nothing. And, there was really no alternative then to infiltrate that stormwater.
Especially if they have to truck the water out in storms. I mean, you're saying that you're, you take the water out in a big storm?
You wish it was like...
Yeah, now. Now.
Only water?
Yeah. Yeah, we'll pump, we pump it up, yeah.
Okay. Is the capacity being oversized for future developments, or you think...
Yes.
Okay.
That, that was part of the planning process. They went in and, and they increased the, for instance, the average daily flow is going to increase by 35 to 40 percent.
Okay.
The peak almost doubled.
Well, there's one question I've had. Approximately 4,100 square feet of wooded areas to be cut and removed, and then you're proposing to replant conservation mix of seed. Is there any opportunity to plant trees in that area?
Yes, I believe there's some. I was looking at the, at these plants. These aren't the full set of plants, but I believe that they do, they did have some plantings in there, and there'll be some planting along, probably along in front of the pump station and on the sides to, to shield it. The one thing you have to be careful of that is, you want to obviously put some planting back and shield, but also you don't want to make it so that if somebody's patrolling along there, you want to make sure somebody's, if somebody's in there, you get a chance to keep an eye on it. So, you're always in a yin and yang in that.
Yep. So, it's, it's lumen seed. It's, I think we would encourage trees towards the back. So, up, up the top there is the proposed area where it'll be lumen.
Can you show the area on the picture, the map you had?
The locust map?
Yeah. Can you describe sort of from there where you're going to cut the trees?
Yep, just to, that's the existing pump station that you see there, and the trees to the left of that.
The trees along the lake are going to remain?
Yes, oh yeah. Along the lake and along the Race Pond. Race Pond's to the top of that, and the lake is obviously to the bar.
So, that pad, that existing footprint will all be parking, pretty much, or...
No, some of it will be parking, and the rest of it will go back to, as loam and conservation mix.
Probably want to put a little bit, I know you want to keep the site somewhat visible from the street for security, but, you know, you could put something, even if it's a, you know, a low tree, a low shrubbery, or a high, you know, elevated tree, something for a little bit of screening from the road.
Yeah. Again...
The parking there, that's just for any employees there, there, or...
The parking within the fence. There'll be a little parking area within, in the fence for this. And then, the rest of the parking is, right now, people park there to fish and use recreation.
Yeah, I know. That's why, they'll have a place to park now?
Yep. Yep.
How many parking spots?
There, I don't think it's really marked out as parking spots.
Okay.
It's just a kind of a little gravel area.
20 by 20, or...
I believe that's about what it is.
So, maybe 3 or 4 times?
Maybe 25 by 25, something like that.
Probably not enough to accommodate, because more people will want to park their cars there.
So, would the extra parking spots here come under the same permit for lake access that's currently used at the old North Pumping Station?
No, this isn't going to be for putting boats, boats in or anything like that.
Okay.
And, I think it'd be hard to kind of manage that, yeah. You'd have to start mocking it out and things like that.
Are there any questions from any of the audience?
The Notice of Intent has been filed with Conservation. I believe they opened that hearing tomorrow, so...
They do.
So, erosion control, all those practices will be in place, and monitoring and site visits can be required with part of the waiver for myself to do at least a couple, but Jennifer will also be monitored.
Any questions?
No.
Someone want to make a motion to waive the watershed special permit?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, Peter? I'm sorry, Peter, you can vote on this. All in favor? Waive the special, watershed special permit.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Oh, you can probably stay right there.
Right, stay right here?
Yeah.
Okay. You know, I always enjoy coming, talking about my CIP, but I have no trucks this year, so I can't talk about any trucks. Next year, I'm, we're going to propose a sweeper. Maybe I'll even come with pictures and stuff.
Sweet, sweet. What's not being done?
It's now. We're, we're in the process of sweeping.
Oh, we didn't, I didn't get the call yet, so usually they do that form last.
They're, they're all sweeping, right. They've been out for a couple of weeks. But probably going to, we have a contract with Indover. They have three sweepers, and they're probably going to, they're doing, they're a little bit, as everybody is.
They're going to complain we're behind because of the, the snow?
Well, the sand, I had to, I, I've never, since I've been here, the first year I was here, but it, since then, I never used any sand until this year, because we couldn't get the salt, not the salt. So, that's why it's a little dirtier than, than normal, and take a little bit longer to clean. Anyways, I'm here to present the CIP for Public Works Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund. So, Public Works, not a lot of projects. It's the, the usual, based on the pavement management program, the five-year plan for the pavement, pavement management in the paving projects. Again, we split that between Chapter 90 and the local funds that we're asking at town meeting. Again, that's, that's in the package there. FY16, by the way. Somebody asked me a question earlier. Oh, all right, I'm sorry. I have, if you, if you saw the town manager's capital improvement plan, it's in that. I don't know, did you, they didn't get a...
Do they have the copy of what's in the draft warrant right now?
Okay. If you go on the website, it's, the, the pavement management program is all here, so, all five years, so. And I checked 15, 16, okay?
Next year?
FY16 is going in, right? And, and the way we do that is, and we did it again this year, just so those that aren't familiar with it, we, we review every road in town, and we rate it 0 to 100. And, we did it five years, six years ago. We did it again last year, and then we rate them all. And, we did come up, we were at, we were about, average was below 70. Now, we're above 70, and if you, 0 to 100. So, we're doing pretty good. We spend, as I said, about $1 million or more a year on paving, and we're at that rating, just so you know, we're somewhere around the numbers that are in the 40s. So, you know, still got to get up a little bit more. And, that's, you, in order to do, to do everything that we'd need to do, you'd need a few million a year, so.
On the paving subject, I noticed all the gas, you know, lines that were dug in over the past year or two, all, you know, they never, they don't compact them well. So, when the winter comes, they all settle in. Do we require any type of bond for them to come back and fix those?
Oh, yeah. They, they, well, we don't, we can't bond by, can't bond with them by state, but they come, they come back by state statute.
I've never actually seen a...
Oh, they come back.
Okay.
Oh, no, they, there's, the, the, the gas company's good at coming back. They actually have been doing a better job, and we've been keeping their feet to the fire. We've done, we have a new plan for them to come in and how they're supposed to come back and, and grind it out and then put, put it back. So, they've been doing, they have a lot of work in town, so they need my approval.
They came to my street twice to refill, and, because it was sinking in.
It was just compacting. They don't compact the soil, it is put a quick...
It was cold, though.
Well, they're only, then they're only down about three feet. So, it's not like when I, when I, or a contractor that's putting in a water and sewer, which is down, you know, much deeper, needs to be better. And the ones, a lot of the trenches that we have trouble with are the private, when somebody's putting a sewer line, a sewer line in or a water line in. Oh, yeah, you probably see those, and we come back. We do, we do have bonds, bonds on, on those, but they run out, of course, after a few years, and then we have, we'll, excuse me, we usually take care of those. So, if you do have one, call the DPW.
Okay.
Yep.
And the holes, the potholes?
Potholes, call the DPW.
Or actually, the Commonwealth Connect app works well, too.
Yep.
I put one in, and then it was done in a few days, so...
We're usually out 24 to 48 hours for those things, especially this time of year. The other part of it is, is the sidewalk reconstruction, where we, it's not construction of new sidewalks, it's repair of the old sidewalks. We're working on that. And, that's about it. In future years, we're going to have some things on the water and high street and some more equipment. So, there's just those two items for, under the Public Works or General Fund.
What's wrong with the high school track?
Excuse me?
What's wrong with the high school track? You going to resurface it?
Nah, not my pro...
That's not on them, that's in the school.
Not my project, unfortunately.
That's the schools.
Yeah. So, that's under the schools, yeah. Then, the other, of course, undermine is the Enterprise Fund, the Sewer and Water Enterprise Fund and the sewer, the improvements to the pump station that I just talked about. That's going in this, this year. And also in that, we have some asset management money to take care of the 22 other sewer pump stations that we have. Then, also this year, and we're going to use the money that is in the sewer mitigation fund that, that developers pay into, and we're going to use some of that to replace a sewer on Commonwealth Ave. So, that's not going to go on the bonding. We're going to use that money. So, that's good. But, we're going through the process, just so that we can see the approval process. And, that's a pretty leaky 100-year-old-plus sewer down on Commonwealth Ave. Under the Water Enterprise Fund, we've been doing a major renovation of the pumping station, I mean, of the water treatment plant. It's, it's going to take about 10 years by the time we're finished. Essentially, we're rebuilding, without rebuilding it. So, all the, the upgrades of pumps, we've redone the HVAC system, we've redone the roof, we've done all the variable speed drives and the pumps and lighting. And, right now, we're, we've done the new electrical power management system, and we're doing the computer control, which is what we asked for last year. That's in process. And this year, one of the things that we're looking for in, which is the major, right now, energy hog at the, at the, at the water treatment plant, and that's the ozone system. And essentially, the ozone system is the disinfectant and a major part of the, of the process that cleans the water. So, right, that's, that's what, what we're looking for in the next couple of years. We're doing some demolition of the pump station on, along the lake, finally, pump station number one. We have that in the program to do that next year. We have the corrosion study and repairs to piping at the water treatment plant. Again, another improvement to that, asset management. And, some of the chemical feed tanks, again, things that we're, we're changing out. And, again, I, I mentioned this, there's some money in there to do the process control computer system at the treatment plant. Some people call it a SCADA system. It's a little bit more than that, because we're also doing a lot of wiring for the remote. We probably use some of the, the remote pump stations and tanks and things like that. So, there's a lot going on with that. I think that's it.
The improvements to the computer system you just mentioned, is there any consideration for cybersecurity as part of those improvements?
Oh, that's major, that's going to be a major part of it. A lot of concerns on how we get the signals back to the treatment plant, and that, we have to be very careful on what systems we use because of the cybersecurity. And, we have, I understand, an expert now on staff on cybersecurity with our new IT guy, Chris McClure, great guy. So, he'll be, and he's going to be involved in the project, so, as well as our consultants.
So, as far as recommending favorable or unfavorable action, I would recommend that you wait till next hearing and update John and Michael of Bruce's presentation, and then vote at that time.
Sorry, and if you have any questions through Jean? I'll go through Jean. Whatever you need, whatever.
We like seeing you burst.
All right, thank you very much. Good evening.
Next item is a public meeting for a preliminary definitive subdivision plan and a planned residential development. The public meeting is not required to be noticed, however, we did notice it to the Butters. And, Phil Christensen is here to represent the applicant and present the plans. Right off the bat, the name submitted was Autumn Woods. We've heard, actually, Anna Butter knew that we have Autumn Chase in town, which we do. Now, subdivisions often have a subdivision name, and then the streets within the subdivision don't reference that name at all. So, Autumn Chase is Periwinkle, Nutmeg, and Thistle. This is somewhat similar, so I pose to fill this, would there be consideration in changing that name to something else? Usually, the people impacted is when people go to resell a house, purchase a house, and it's years later, and they come in with documents that have been recorded at the registry, and planning has to find related folders to those. They don't ever reference the street names. They reference the subdivision names at that point.
Good evening. I'm Philip Christensen, representing Bob Messina, who's here this evening. He's a developer of the property. It's property owned by Joyce Bradshaw on Boxford Street. As you know, in the PRD process, we have to do a plan, a proof plan for conventional subdivision, which, which we have here and which is shown on, behind you. So, what we have is a possibility of seven lots on this property. It's approximately 18 acres. It's on the north side of Boxford Street and sits between Duncan Drive and Brookview Drive.
Does anyone like to see all this before we get going? Yeah. Would be to the lower left of your picture. So, it's traveling out Boxford Street before Brookview. That's just another picture of the lot itself. Okay?
Now, Duncan Drive was developed before this became a two-acre zone area. I think Brookview may have been a PRD when it was originally developed.
It's a PRD, yeah. So, that, all that green around Brookview is the open space associated with that PRD development.
So, again, we have two-acre zoning here, and with this property, we could get seven lots that would meet the requirements of contiguous buildable area, lot shape, frontage, and whatnot. We, we're going to bring water from, there's a water line in Brookview. What's interesting is, there's no water in that direction, but Brookview ties into a water system from up in Rocky Brook, I believe. So, you're going to bring a water line. We spoke to Tim Willett about this. He suggested it. Bring water from here to the subdivision and up the road. No sewer, it's all septic. Okay. We, we went to conservation early to get the wetlands, we marked out the wetlands, get, file an ANRAD with conservation. They confirmed the wetland locations. And, that's what we show on this PRD plan that we have. But, there's a large wetland through here, some wetland out front here. With the testing we did, we did find pretty much sand on the lower levels of this. There's a knoll in the middle of the site right here. We'll wait till she gets that.
So, test pits have been done on all the sites, no correct?
Test pits and perk tests on all the sites, recorded with the Board of Health. What's that?
Health reviewed them, and health thought the soils were fine.
Yep. So, with that, what we're proposing is the PRD rather than the conventional subdivision. And, we would concentrate the seven lots right here with the remainder of open space here. So, of the 18 acres, 11 and 1/2 acres is open space. Of that open space, approximately, I think, four acres is wetland. And, there is access to the open space. The road that posed is here, and this open space parcel comes through here. So, if people choose to, they could come up the road and walk the open space. And, that connects to the open space from Brookview, which is right here. One of the requirements of the PRD is a 50-foot buffer, natural vegetation. And, we ask in just two spots, here and here, the suitable soils are down here within that 50-foot. So, we would propose to put septic systems here. As far as the roadway construction goes...
So, the requirement of the 50-foot buffer is to remain in its natural state. Trees and shrubs can be added, and it runs the full length of the perimeter of the entire parcel. So, the septic, you know, installation there, we certainly need to evaluate that.
Yeah, that's where, if we did a conventional subdivision, that's where the systems would go. So, we're asking that, that requirement be waived in just those particular instances. To get a little bit better view of this. That's just a larger view, so it's easier to see. The roadway, as we've done in some other subdivisions in town, will be low-impact development. So, it'll be an narrow road with swales to carry the water and a stormwater treatment area here. This whole road is uphill from this point up to here. And, what we do is build swales along the edges of the road, connect them over to a stormwater area here for treatment, and provide some infiltration as well. We have been, we've met also early on with Natural Heritage, because there are, is a priority habitat area out here. I believe it's the Blandings Turtle? Okay. And, we walked the site with someone from Natural Heritage. The Blanding Turtle, they think the overwintering habitat is to the south, but they think this is a good foraging habitat. So, they were pleased how we set this up, where we're not even coming within 100 feet of the wetlands, except at the entrance. But, the rest of it, we stay more than 100 feet away with the whole subdivision. So, and that's it? Think it's 750? Have to check that. Yeah, just a little over 700 feet.
Is the only way through your house?
Far is for the septic on two lots and clearing parts?
As far as the PRD regs go.
Okay. And, how far back would you be clearing for those septics?
Well, they're probably within 35 feet of the lot line here. Be two trenches that are approximately 40 feet long, two feet wide.
So, you probably have to clear like 60 feet, because you need a little working space.
Right.
And, then are you going to do any replanting on the...
You can't plant trees over it, so.
But, that's right.
Just be grasses.
And, what's on the backside of those? Is that, that's the open space?
That's the open space for Brookview.
Do we have any aerial maps? Is that treed or anything?
Yeah, there is one.
So, that was to show that the backside of that whole side of the lot is the Brookview?
It's pretty dense between there.
There's a large wetland in there. You can see it in that area.
Right.
Any regulations for a buffer between wetlands and the septic tanks?
The tank is 50 feet, but the system is 100 feet.
So, you would be measuring the wetlands going back to see that you're 100 feet?
Yes, yes.
Is there any alternative location for those septics? Would it work, or...
Not really. They're, for this one, I don't think so. This one, maybe, we could search in through here. We might find something there. But, I think this one is kind of, kind of stuck. And, it's that issue of, you know, do we do a conventional subdivision and put them there and don't need a waiver?
Right.
Or, do a PRD and save the open space, and we get that one waiver on the, the septic location? But, we, that's something we could try is, you know, this lot is oversized. You can swing that lot line and maybe get one back here, so this would come in. that lot line and maybe get one back here, so this would come out of that 50-foot. But that happened to be where we did the testing.
Yep.
When we were out there. What happens is you get, this worked out well on this one, but as we got back here, the soil got very tight along in this ridge here. And then it drops off, it's alluvial soils down through here, so there's a lot of sands deposited by probably mosquito brook, you know, 10,000 years ago and it was a river.
Curve in the road a little bit.
Take out the wetlands over there.
Yeah. Part of that is to keep a hundred feet from the wetlands. So we don't want to get that that way, but it's, the soils on this side of the hill were a lot tighter. This is actually on the hillside here, but it's fairly decent soils. But this side, the soils weren't as good in this section. This was decent, this was all sand, that's all sand back there.
Where does it flood on Boxford Street? There's always a certain area along there that floods.
I couldn't tell you. I don't know. I would guess where Mosquito Brook crosses under it.
And where is that in relation to?
If you look on that, up to the right of Brookview, see Mosquito Brook's at the end of Duncan Drive, and if you follow that around Brookview.
Because I know that there's a part of Boxford Street that...
It's right there.
Right up at Brookview.
I think we have some questions from some of the audience on the...
Is the road access gonna be on Boxford Street?
Do you want to step up, please, and just give your name and?
Jim Beftis, I'm in a butter at 537 Boxford, just wondering where the road access is gonna be on Boxford Street?
Sure. You know where Joyce Bradshaw's daughter lives?
No, you will.
How can I point to that? Yeah, where it says Boxford Street there, the house above the T slightly to the right?
Yeah.
Well, our subdivision property is that big yellow line through there.
Right.
And we would come down near the right-hand side of that with the roadway. So the roadway we have here is, that house I mentioned is right here, and that's where the roadway comes in.
So closer to Brookview than Duncan?
Yes, yes.
Hi, I'm Lauren Kramer. Lauren Kramer, 537 Boxford. Many questions. I just want to understand a septic system issue. Are you looking for a waiver for two of the houses to put a septic system in for those? Or is this septic system connected for all of the houses?
No, it's just two individual houses, and the waiver is not specifically on septic system regulations, but only on the planning board regulations of a buffer zone.
Okay.
All right, so it, it'll be a septic system required by Title V and local rules, no change in that.
Okay.
It's just a matter of this buffer zone issue with the planning board.
So what happens with all the trees that you're cutting down in this area to create this whole complex?
Ordinarily today, the trees are, hire a guy who takes down the trees, and they chip them all, and they ship them to the hamster and they burn them for energy.
And is there any requirement of certain amount of trees and shrubbage to be replanted?
No.
Okay. So is the lot sizes just under two acres each, or?
That's a good point. In the normal subdivision, they're two acres, the first one I showed. In these, they're half-acre lots. So one of the advantages of the PRD is you reduce the amount of trees you cut, you reduce the amount of land used for the houses. So we go from two-acre lots to half-acre lots. So if the lots are a quarter the size they would be under normal regulations.
Okay. How long is this project supposed to take?
I don't think you can answer that at this point.
Well, you know, if you start now, we've got to go back to the board, so maybe if we're lucky, say August, road starts. So you can get a road in before the winter, get some foundations in, and probably start selling houses in the spring. If you have a good year, you'll sell seven houses. You know, that's a good year, and everybody would be real happy if they sold houses in a year. It just depends on how long the lot, house sales take. And you don't finish the paving on the, on the road until all the houses are sold. So you put in the binder course and then the top course is in after all the houses are built.
So my next question, I don't know if it's really for you or more the planning board, there was a comment in here about a fire hydrant being put on the road, and I'm not sure exactly where on the road, but does that mean there's more plans for hot, fire hydrants to come into the Boxford Street area, or?
Yeah, that's, and that'll be, it's kind of between the water department and the fire department to decide. We'll have one in the subdivision, and then between Brookview and where this road is going, there'll be another hydrant.
Okay.
So, and it, the town likes to have them spaced 500 feet apart, but we'll let them tell us where the fire hydrants go.
But these houses would be on town water versus any well water?
Town water. That's correct. And have fire protection.
Again, I'm not sure if this question is related to you or someone else. I noticed that it looks like they're going to start paving on Boxford Street, right before our house, which is 537, up to, I think, the town line. Is that in anticipation of this or totally unrelated?
Unrelated. But that'd be the DPW as per view.
So that could be done, but then...
No, I did speak to the town engineer about that, and they are going to hold off this section of paving on Boxford Street.
Okay. That's my concern, that's how much of...
Hold that off, once we get the water line in, you know, if it gets approved, we get the water line in, then they'll finish that paving section.
And if it's approved for clearing, is there certain hours that clearing is allowed and not allowed? Like, is, I'm...
We handle that, not, we set work hours, which is a standard seven to five, Monday through Saturday, and then no Sunday work, isn't it, our standard work hours?
I think Saturday is eight to five.
Oh, eight to five, okay, yeah.
Okay, thank you. These are all my questions.
Any other questions?
Yeah, as mentioned earlier, that Autumn Woods, I think we sent the note over, change it, Wellington Woods is it?
I didn't receive, I might have received it much later today, but I did speak with Lois and she suggested Wellington Lane, I think.
Yeah, that's right. But when the subdivision comes in, it'll have that name on it.
Any other questions?
Well, we have to, as you know, Phil, we can't vote on this tonight anyways, and we don't have the quorum requirements for our...
It's really to get the feedback.
I know, so, so if someone wants to make a motion to continue us to the next meeting?
Will we continue the hearing on Wellington Woods until the next meeting?
602 Boxford Street.
602 Boxford Street, right.
Second.
All clear?
Aye.
Thank you.
So, guys, if you come up with anything, and Phil, I'm sure will be happy to share any of the plans, but then we'll be back here in two weeks.
Any questions? Any discussion item for AD Salway?
So I have added this discussion item to the agenda. I spoke with the homeowner, and do not see him here tonight, but I told him he's welcome to attend if he would like. For those that were here last April, Peter, I don't believe you were here for this. So AD Salway had received a watershed special permit, actually had received a couple, one in the 90s, I believe, and one in 2004, I believe. There was a limit of work on that notice of decision subsequent to those. He did perform some work in the rear of his lot, it involved construction of a cobblestone walkway, and there was some clearing. So we had the applicant back in, in April of 14, and issued a watershed special permit. That watershed special permit had conditions in it that included a bond in the amount of $1,000 and an as-built plan. The applicant, from what I can see, was, did not attend that hearing, the final hearing where the decision was discussed, reviewed, and amended from the draft version. When he received it in the mail, he did contact the planning department, and at that time, the town planner had really, I think, just left the town in North Andover. There was some email correspondence with myself and Kurt Bellevance, the then director of community development, where Paul expressed that, I'm sorry, Paul Russell, who's the applicant, expressed that he was not part of any discussions related to a bond or an as-built and did not agree with those conditions. Kurt Bellevance subsequently responded to that and let him know that he had an option to appeal the decision, or he could file for a modification to the watershed special permit if he chose. From there, really, I don't think there was any communication until this spring, when Jennifer Hughes, the conservation administrator, reached out to determine when the work was going to begin. So in the planning department, we had not received any recorded plans or decision, the bond had not been filed. As far as I can tell, no work had commenced at all last growing season. When Jennifer reached out to see when work would start, essentially the feedback was that the applicant really didn't agree with those discussions and I don't think was going to pursue meeting the criteria of the special permit. I informed Jennifer that no planting can begin until he files a bond, because he's conditioned with both our boards. And at that point, I let the applicant know I'm going to bring it to the board. I believe you have the email trails of what, although it has not been discussed in person, was communicated via email.
I do remember the discussion, I believe, because of the situation where there was dispute over what was agreed upon in the original plans, and we also required photographs. We added that into the decision because the applicant had, you know, said that some of the stuff was pre-existing to the, you know, so...
So there were conditions that included pre-pictures as well as post-pictures, and to revisit the site a year later to make sure it was in compliance. The discussion at the draft decision when it was being reviewed was, is $1,000 enough for an as-built? And there was a little deliberation.
Enough, $1,000 is actually enough, so, I mean, it's my opinion that the thousand, he has to post $1,000. And I believe that we had said with the as-built, I mean, we don't need an engineered as-built, I mean, we don't need it down to the, you know, to the inch, you know, as long as the conservation, everything, the plans, you know, there's definitive plans that say this is the type of vegetation, you know, and he can, you know, measure it out with a, you know, tape measurer and stuff like that. But I believe we wanted plans on what was planted, where it was planted, so that way, if there's a problem in the future, we have a definitive record of it.
I'm confused. So is he saying that he's just going to do what he wants to do, or, I, I'm confused of what we're discussing.
We did a watershed special permit, and then part of the decision was he has to post $1,000.
I know. So is he saying that he's just not going to post it and do what he wants to do?
He's basically saying he disagrees with it a year later.
What does that mean?
That he doesn't want to do it.
It's not where you do anything.
He's not gonna do it.
So he's not gonna do anything to the property?
So his response, when Jennifer reached out to try to get his timetable, when he's going to begin, he responded that once the snow is gone and we still have a lot, we will get to the planting. So he doesn't intend to get to the planting.
That's the one thing, I didn't understand that comment at the end.
So this would happen...
He'll do the plantings, but he's not going to post the bonds, is what he's sort of saying in his email.
But how can we make him?
The same way we had to bring him in and issue the order, notice.
I mean, it appears to me we have one thing...
So the point is, he said, I'll begin the planting, and my point to Jennifer was, he can't really begin the planting until he meets our criteria too. So, and that's, and I communicated that to Mr. Russell as well, that you can't begin it until the conditions of planning would have met. And it's really stalled there, because he really feels he was not part of that decision. He didn't agree with the decision.
We had a meeting, I mean, not to attend, yeah.
And, and like I said, there was an email, April 28 to 14, from Kurt, giving him the options would be to either file an appeal.
He knows that.
Okay. So...
I don't, I don't see any reason to waive it, the decision.
It's just the history.
Yeah.
Can I just ask about the history?
Sure.
We have that walkway that's... Watershed special permit to build the pool, and then there was a walkway extension done.
Right.
And it was noticed when, I think on a Brooks inspection, right?
Yeah.
There was equipment, everything.
On the North Andover Country Club.
Oh, the Country Club, okay.
The Rolling Ridge.
Okay. There was an extension of the walkway and some clearing, pretty much, pretty close to getting all the way down to the lake, so...
Is part of the history that, I mean, there's a couple hundred feet of masonry stone wall that's, you know, at the water's edge, is that part of the history?
No, that's not part of it. It's basically, it's basically a handmade cobblestone walkway that was added, but then it was, there was a hole, wouldn't let planning, the town planner on the site to inspect, wouldn't let conservation on the site to inspect, and we actually had to issue a notice to enforcement, because they wouldn't, he wouldn't, then he denied that it was, it was always on the plan, so.
I see.
So there was a history that they, you know, of what was actually there, what was approved, everything, there was a dispute over that, so...
The photos that you said were required, are those photos to be taken in the future or back then?
Yeah, we wanted the pre, because he, there was some contention on what was actually there, because he wouldn't let us onsite. So by not knowing what was onsite, we only could go from the, a lot of the aerials. So we wanted the pre and the post, so that way it's clear we have a photo evidence trail of what was there, what was approved, what was restored, you know, so then we can have it in the file, we can go back to it.
So there was to be the current conditions prior to any work being done, and then the
as-built plant would, plan would show the plantings. And then following the installation of the plantings during the 14 growing season, conservation administrator and town planner will conduct a post-installation inspection with the homeowner. The homeowner will write a report of the number of plantings installed, photos and monitoring, for monitoring purposes. And then from June of 15, so what we're anticipating doing this summer, through June of 16, the homeowner will submit monitoring reports describing the health of the plantings after leafout. So it was...
It's supposed to be done last year.
Right.
I mean, so, too.
Oh, it was, right.
So the fact that, you know, we're a year later and now it's, we're being told again, we'll wait for the snow, you know, to melt and...
The snow's probably melted, but, and it's, how does the work commence if? If he doesn't meet the criteria of the pictures, the bond, there's a deep restriction required...
There's outstanding water on his property forever. You know, and then we'll have to file again. I mean, you know, unfortunately, if that's the way, you know, he wants to do it, even if he plants it, it's still, that's on there, he can never sell his property. You know? You know, we'll have, we'll file the notice and we'll record it.
And I guess we should probably tell Jennifer that.
We have to. Yeah.
We're not waiting.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, if we have to, we can record the decision too.
He's recording, isn't he? He has not submitted a recorded decision. Order demands at this point.
Yeah, so if we have to, we'll, we'll have to talk to Tom on how to handle recording it, and then it'll get done eventually.
And if the, if he doesn't begin work or enact the permit, it expires after two years as well, so...
Jennifer still has the ability to...
Right, Jennifer does in the order of conditions.
Right.
To find.
Yes.
To find.
So if there's, if there's no pre-fotos, I mean, is their clearing continuing?
Well, that we don't know.
We don't know? I mean, we don't, yeah.
But he provided an existing planting. You know, we didn't make him do this engineered plan, if I recall, right? But he did provide an existing...
I don't think we charged, we didn't charge him a review fee or anything like that, you know, for the watershed special permit either, so I mean...
But the decision does reference an existing plan.
It's, it's, the $1,000 is refundable.
And it was...
It's not, you know...
It's really too bad, too, because when he came in, I mean, he presented a reasonable thing that, you know, it wasn't a professional concrete thing.
Which is worse sometimes, though.
Yeah, and, you know, we, we gave him the benefit of the doubt, and then to say, well, since the planner wasn't there and I didn't agree with it. Well, he doesn't agree with the decision of the planning board, he's not a voting member. And that's how we granted the, you know, the special permit. I don't think we...
I think we're clear. Okay. All right. Meeting minutes.
Someone really want to make a motion to approve the April 7 meeting minutes? They did.
Okay.
So vote.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anything else before we have a motion to adjourn? You're sitting back there very quietly, sir. Did you have anything for the, that's, no, you, you turning your head.
No, no, you.
You.
Oh, okay.
Someone want to make a?
I make the motion, we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.